All right. Your order. Let's see here. Sorry. What's going on? Doc, what do you do to get 110?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the real government, which stands one nation under God. Invisible if everything is necessary.
All right. One call please.
Dr. Dean.
President.
Douglas Beatty.
Here.
John Fairchild.
Present.
Christopher Galloway.
Here.
Patty Oslin.
Here.
Ed Merritt.
Here.
Nicole Corr.
Here.
Richard Seater.
Here.
David Trudeau.
Here.
Devin Nego.
All right. Approve the agenda. Is all of the superintendent of schools or council of board of education to approve the agenda? We have motion, please.
Almost in time.
Ready? Second?
Second, please.
Any discussion questions for the agenda? Are in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Presentations. Topic is opening of school by the principal.
Can you hear me? All right, welcome. Good evening, everybody. I just want to begin by thanking our center basement faculty and staff for creating a welcoming environment for the opening of school. They did a wonderful job. The kids walked in the building, smiled on faces. Wonderful to see that welcoming environment standing by doors. So just wonderful to see that energy back in the building with our kids. So I want to thank our faculty staff for that. I also want to thank our buildings and grounds for the amount of work they put into summer to make sure our classroom was set clean. And just, I know they're with me a lot, trying to make sure that it's situated and maybe put their nose to the ground so we're targeted. So I want to thank all those people. I want to start first just with some of the stuff at summer school. We did have a highly successful summer school for six weeks this summer. We had 77 students obtain course credit over the summer. We had 93 students come for August Regents Review. The reason for that August Regents Review is for them to obtain higher scores on reassessments. So some of them already passed the reassessments, have proficiency, but they're coming in to get mastery, to get higher scores. There's also ones that, you know, failed proficiency, didn't meet proficiency, or had a special appeal due to nice it, but wanted to challenge a special appeal to get a 65 or higher proficiency. So it's really nice to see our students raising that bar. You know, they could come in and say, they'll pick the special appeal. A lot of them didn't do that, right? They had 93 kids come in, spend a week of review, and then take those exams again. So that was really cool to see that expectation be met by our kids. We also had 17 kids qualify for special appeals that previously didn't qualify for special appeals. So, you know, really good overall summer program. A lot of kids having highly success, once again, because of the teachers going here this summer and putting the time in the summer with our kids. Six weeks, six hours a day, working with our kids and, you know, closing that achievement, yeah, right? That's the overall goal for our summer school, and we did that this summer, as you can see just from those data points, which are pretty impressive. To start the school year, August 31st, we had freshman orientation. Part of that freshman orientation is building capacity, getting our kids in the building, getting some building tours for them so they feel simulated to their ninth grade. We had kind of a social hour with them, just kind of hanging out. I didn't really want to go too far in depth, a lot of, you know, detailed stuff. We wanted them to come, just hang out, interact, get to know some other people, socialize. We did have a section in the auditorium where our counselors presented high graduation requirements, making sure they understood those pieces. They had a building tour, they could check their lockers out, all those pieces. One of the things happening was, I liked it, but our original plan was is to get them on the athletic field and have them sit in the bleachers, because that's where we have graduations. So I wanted our freshmen to come in, sit there where they'd be sitting four years from now. Unfortunately, mother nature came through and we had a huge rainstorm right about 5:30, so we had to shift everything inside. So we made a little challenge there, but pretty cool, over the wise, really successful. Building safety team met last week. We went over roles and responsibilities of every person on that team, including our guards, anybody that's in our building, our secretaries, our admin team, to make sure everybody had the correct roles and responsibilities. We created a document that has everybody's role responsibility in every single one of our emergency situations. So we have a really good team, a lot of knowledge within that team, within our guards, our SROs, to bring a nice capacity to, you know, making sure our kids are safe every day in our staff. We conducted grade level assemblies, so the second day of school, September 7th, we had each grade level come down to the high school gymnasium and we talked about expectations. And one of the things I'm looking at this year is, our theme for the high schools is contagious positivity. I want to make sure that we're contagious and we're positive around each other. And really kind of sending that home for our kids and making sure that we're there for each other, right? We're back in, a little bit more normalcy this year, we're being there for each other and making sure that, you know, we have positive experiences, the kids want to be in our building. And everybody here is successful. So really cool opening day for those presentations. And then last Friday, we had our back to school social. Once again, schoolwide, we go out, we actually started the gymnasium, we did a reunion ceremony, which was the first time we were able to do that in, you know, three years. Students were able to move from one bleacher to the next, cheer for each other, be part of that process, moving outside the athletic field. At that point, play games, play cornhole, throw balls around, have those social interactions again for our kids to build that capacity for that Friday of the week. And then this year, this week, we're starting off, you know, doing a really good job, making sure to prepare our kids, teachers run, you know, getting ready and, you know, it's fun to see that we're back in that team. So I'm excited for us to see this school year, we're off to a great start, and some really cool opportunities that are already in the week. So, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me all right? Okay. First of all, I'm going to thank someone who helped me get my building in order, Jen Parliament, huge help in getting that together, along with Josh Nolan and Andrew Baker, were instrumental in getting our furniture situation organized. And our trophy cases, I don't know if you've taken a look around the middle school, but we have two new trophy cases to display our achievements over the past few years. And we also have our school store. So we have an official school store upstairs that we're ready to inventory and get going to. So those are some great new additions to our building. Prior to the official start of the school year, new sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students came in on August 25th for an orientation that included a presentation by myself, associate principal Manchester, and our school counselors. These were followed by a building tour led by National Honor Society students and a teacher meet and greet. Students also had the opportunity to hear from a student panel made up of our current seniors and ask them questions about their middle school experience. That same evening, the middle school hosted our first back to school social that was attended by all current BMS students and their families. There was a raffle, music games, tables with information about athletics, clubs, counselors. We had special guest stars, Lacey May and Annelia, who were around. And everyone enjoyed a little bit of Stewart's ice cream. I couldn't give that away. We still have a three gallon tub of chocolate upstairs. There were approximately about 300 people in attendance, so I think for our first back to school social, it was a huge success and a wonderful way to kick off a new school year. Welcoming students back the first week of school, we focused on setting our students up for success by clearly outlining the expectations. For school, faculty and staff were in PDIS stations that taught our students the schoolwide expectations ranging from safety expectations with guard Brad Miller to bus expectations taught by Ms. Buffy Duncan from the bus garage. Six of seventh grade students were then able to apply their knowledge of their assembly expectations soon after on Friday when they attended an assembly recognizing 9/11 as a day of service and remembrance. The event included members of the community discussing and answering questions about their careers or volunteer work that involves serving others. The panel participants, participants, excuse me, consisted of Lieutenant Chris Heilman from New York State Police, Ryan Spahnhold, paramedic, city classroom fire department, Assemblyman Billy Jones, New York's 115th Assembly District, Barry Finnegan from the North Country Honor Flight, Chantal Latour from JCEO, Nikki Buck from United Way, and Jim Snook from Community Bank, Rotary Club, American Red Cross Volunteer. So we had a lot of volunteers that day, and Rebecca Hamilton and Bill Duffany, that Ms. Russell, Ashley Russell, and Randy Paulsberg were instrumental in getting that panel together for the start of the school year. You might have also noticed the newly painted creative cross walk on the Haynes Road. It was completed by some of our sixth grade students who attended our summer bridge program in conjunction with the Clinton County Health Department in support of the town of Beetham Town Highway Department. This project was highlighted in the September 10th edition of the Sun Community News. There are a few pictures of that. Came out great. There were a few little footprints out there, but they'll go away soon enough, I guess. There was plenty of backroom smiles these past few days as students and faculty and staff came back together in the mark of the beginning of the year. We are looking forward to a very successful school year, both academically and for, and doing a lot in terms of praying for the social and well-being of our students and taking care of them all around. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Let me start there. Hey, can you hear me okay? Good evening, everyone. Before I start talking about our back to school, I'd like to talk about the summer a little bit and Brad about Cumberland Head. So it was a very busy summer for the Cumberland Head staff that only, didn't many of them teach summer school, the summer bridge program, and act as substitutes. There are also many opportunities for teachers to sign up for professional development in summer workdays. I was really happy with the turnout of each of these offerings. Teachers participated in several things. There was a two-day science curriculum writing day led by Principal Bartcom and myself. Many participated in the math committee work. That was district-wide, K through 12. That was led by Superintendent Manix, myself, Principal Nelson, Principal Bartcom. I think it was a team member to lead the committee. The work was a three-day endeavor in which committee members outlined essential skills students should acquire by the end of the grade level. They refocused on key standards and started to plan for a school-wide back challenge. Several teachers also participated in a three-day inclusive school conference. There was also Beetham Town Central School District PD days in which teachers could learn several things such as CPR tech skills, behavior management, and things such as how to prevent crisis behavior. Again, a high level of participation from teachers at Cumberland Head, I'm very proud to see my faculty members there. And I'd like to thank the district office for providing the opportunities, Jen Parliament for getting it all together for us, and of course, the fantastic meals that were provided. That was a nice show of appreciation, and I think everybody enjoyed that. So our open house at Cumberland Head was held on August 31st. It was very well attended, students were excited to see their new teachers and their classmates. Teachers, of course, had their classrooms decorated and organized for their students. Students, everything looked great. Our PTO was there selling new CHES merchandise that you'll see out and about for sale. They were serving popcorn. Our transportation department offered bus tours for our little, and our cafeteria staff was also available for questions. So thank you to everybody who participated to help our event run smoothly. And on the first day, the students were greeted with music and sidewalk talk messages, and they were very happy to be sitting side by side, working in groups, and seeing each other on the playground. It was definitely a different energy and level of excitement for the students and the staff this year. It has to do with the classroom back to pre-COVID settings with areas for group work and a rug to gather on. You know, rug is a very important thing in all those three classrooms, students like to sit and gather in rugs, so that was nice to have that back. It was a very smooth start to school years. Thank you to our buildings and grounds, our custodians, our transportation department, cafeteria staff, and cafeteria staff. All the departments worked together to make sure that everybody had what they needed on opening day. Lastly, our Beetham Town Adventure Zone has started up at the elementary buildings. Students are using the extended day to do several exciting activities. I'll mention just a few because there are just so many great things going on, but just a couple of examples. There's fifth grade class, and the title of the offering is called Fun with Frosting because there was interest in cooking. So therefore, there's a baking class started that helps kids decorate, learn new recipes and just decorate them. In kindergarten, there's a class on yoga, using movement storybooks. Fourth grade, there's a great offering in which students can build a robot and travel to Mars using special robotics kits. So we're looking forward to even more great offerings and make up for concessions. Looking forward to a great year, working with our faculty, staff, students, and again, like Principal Nelson said, not only focusing on the academics, but making sure students feel safe and secure and being well-rounded in the details.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening. So Principal Nelson did a great job highlighting our professional development this summer. I won't rehash that, but it was very successful. We're very thankful for that. The school year at BES is off to a soaring success. The momentum at BES is as strong as ever, just shy of 500 kilos. We welcomed our students back with the open house on August 31st. Couple highlights there, our PTO put together a beautiful balloon arch as the kids walked in. They loved it with nice photo opportunity for them, too. And we created an interactive bulletin board where parents would leave notes for their kids to read as they walked through the building, "Good luck on your year," that kind of thing. Turnout was great, with teachers meeting the vast majority of their students and families. I saw many of you there, for example. The building and grounds was looking amazing, we thanked them for that. The opening super campus games were very productive with grade level meetings, finalized curriculum plans, and opening day activities. The PTO treated our entire BES staff to a baked potato bar. So it sounds kind of interesting, but we had all kinds of fixings for baked potatoes. It was amazing. We're very thankful to them to keep us motivated and energized as the school year was starting up. We're thrilled to welcome new staff this year, including Associate Principal. Ms. Musso has jumped right in this role and fits in very nicely. We also welcome new teaching staff and support staff for our building. And we also lost the relationship with VHSN. Both Cumberland Head and BES are working with Tessa Parent as a new intervention specialist, and she is off and rocking rolling every day with kids. We also have teams or committees, if you will, at BES. One new one was formed when the summer called Peace Club, and that stands for positivity, educators, appreciation, culture, and empowerment. Their first task was to join forces with the PTO and give the faculty one huge makeover. It looks great, we thank them for that, and they have more initiatives on the way. As mentioned, our first week of school, students are getting ready and working with their teachers on routines, lunch, their specials, and even baths, as Principal Sal already mentioned. We have some ideas of snap circuits, kids are loving that one. Running club, card games, mindfulness, and we look forward to having more adventures, as well as BES has started back up with our elementary student council this year, too. So we're looking forward to that endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, the next presentation is about student needs data.
Good evening. I'm just going to share a few highlights from our special education data, and starting with, we probably talked about least restrictive environment before, which is just our requirement that we educate students with disabilities as much as possible with their non-disabled peers. And that's because we know from decades of research that students do better when they are living with their peers without disabilities. So this is from our state report card, our least restrictive environment. This is one of the measures they look at every year. Students with 80% or more in the day in a general education program. You can see it's at 63.8%, and just underneath you see the state target's 60. So we met that target. We don't, we haven't always met that target in the past, and so that's been a goal for several years. This graph is showing concern. The first set of numbers is that same number that general education, 80% or more in their school day, and from the school years 15, 16 through 19, 20. And you can see that that has improved every year. We've increased that amount of time that students with disabilities have been in the general education setting. And then that next set of numbers is the graduation rate for students with disabilities. And you can see there that that has been increasing over the last several years. And then the final columns are that dropout rate for students with disabilities. And if you look at that, you can see clearly that it has decreased, that we've had fewer dropouts of students with disabilities over the last several years. So it's nice to see that as we become more inclusive, that some of our outcomes, I think, demonstrated in the data that our graduation rate and our dropout rate are improving. And then I just wanted to highlight some of our state assessment data from the school leader, and it goes through each grade level, but I just, if you look at the highlights, this is comparison to Clinton County School Districts. We were ranked number one for ELA in grade three, and this is for students scoring a three or four on state assessments, and ranked number two for grade four, and number three for grade seven. And then you can see that for math, grade three, we were also number one in the county, and math, grade eight, we were number two. And then science, grade four, we were ranked number three in the county. Those are just kind of some of our highlights from the special education data this past year. If you don't have any questions?
One question. How does this compare to prior years in the recent cohort? Is it, does it match cohort or are you trying to change the cohort?
Can you repeat that quickly?
So this is data we have for these grades, for these classes last year, or what year is this?
For the state assessment data?
Yeah.
This is last school year.
Right. Is there a trend from one year to the next, as I mean, LA three to four to five, based on cohort from the previous years?
You can look at that, really nicely laid out in school leader, and I didn't share that with you tonight, but you can watch the cohort throughout the years and see if it's been consistent or, you know, what is happening with that data and cohort, but I did not highlight that.
So this is the students with disabilities data. We have the other data, and we can break it down into places to Sunday in a round of the dime, so we can go through that particular question at another meeting, if you'd like. But we regularly track how, you know, it's a diagonal track, you know, kids from third and fourth, fifth, and sixth, and seventh grade, and we track that. Obviously, in the first COVID year, there's no data, but we do track it, we're very aware of it. And I'm going to tell you that the data, you know, a lot of people, they complain that, a lot of people were very, very happy, I should start with that, that we were in school during the pandemic, right?
Yep.
Some people, right, some people thought they should be home around the bell. Of course, I'm looking at it, he's mentioned that he knows people close to him, he should be like other, like other students. But all kidding aside, we leapfrogged a number of schools, which is very rare when you're in the largest institution with a higher than average socioeconomic, poor socioeconomic status ranking, right? So we have more students that have socioeconomic needs, we have more students than the general population, we have more special ed students, and our outcomes are better than all, right? So that's just really impressive. And you'll see that, you can see that across all data. And you see that with our graduation rate, special ed, regular ed. We'll continue to showcase that data.
The graph data portion, I think it's the slide right before this one. Yeah, so we have 19, 20, do we have 20, 21 as well?
So this is on the school report card, it's under 20, 21, but it's actually 19, 20 data, just how they report out.
Okay.
It's a year kind. So no, I don't have the, we don't have the 20, 21.
Because that would actually be, okay.
Yeah, it's always tracking one year.
I'm sorry. You know, it's, that, that 19, 20 number is really impressive. When you look at like 15, 16, it's 47.4%, then we jump, you know, you know, touch south a 6%, about a 3% jump. And then we see, you know, just south of a 10% jump. That's, that's, that's pretty incredible. I'm curious as to what was the, what do you think the underlying cause was to see that that big of a jump in that year?
Well, because we've slowly been trying to become more inclusive and include kids, more looking at our programs and how do we best include them. So for, you know, it was two years ago, there was some change in regulations on certification at the high school level for special education teachers, and we made the decision to department move away from 15-1 academic classrooms and do consult with teacher model for those students. So that helped improve students being separated into a special education self-contained classroom for those periods. So that was a big contributor.
So you moved away from the 15-1 model?
Yes.
Did, did you do that, like, did that cascade down through middle school and elementary school?
Yes, so we have, at the middle school, there used to be also some 15-1 math and reading classes that are no longer there. We also had at one time three 12-1 classrooms at the middle school, and we now have two.
Okay.
So as we've looked at each student and what they can do and how to get them best included in the general education setting, so they're not removed from that curriculum, then we've decreased the numbers in those programs. Same, so this year, so it's not requested, obviously, in this data, but in the future it will be, there used to be, well, three, and then two 12-1 classrooms at Cumberland Head Elementary School, and this year, that school is fully inclusive and there's no self-contained classrooms.
Is that the same in the elementary school here?
No, so the elementary school here has, is a little bit different because they do have two 8-1-1 classrooms, which were not at Cumberland, you know, we only have them here. We have one less 12-1 classroom at BES, and then we still do have a 12-1, 3-1 classroom at BES, so it is a little bit different.
Is that 12-1, 3-1, is that considered an elementary room or is that a?
Well, no, it's a, it can be a K-12 room, so.
It's a K-12.
So it's just kind of slowly looking at all students and seeing where we can find success out in the general education setting. We've really seen a big change in some of the students, for instance, at the middle school that used to be in a 12-1 program that have now been pushed out and are being successful in the high school curriculum and passing Regents exams. It's been very nice to see the progress.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation and then that point, too, for those components that everybody discussed so well, but I do want to thank everybody, the buildings and grounds head and team, board of education, teachers and staff for making the kickoff to this year great. It truly was great. I think the main reason last year is to seem really good and get back to what we perceive as normal. So it seemed to be more exciting than, than most other years, so that was just terrific. And I'm very, very thankful for that. As I mentioned many times, I mentioned many times this year, when I speak, Crystal Palmer's in the audience, she was on this board when we talked about how are we going to change some of the things we're doing when it comes to being reactive, reacting to, or having a better process, I guess I should say, to discipline disruptive students and students in crisis. And that's a priority this year, as we've talked about before, we hired more people, we put in, put in place what we know as a better process. We've got to.
Education program. You can see it's at sixty-three point eight percent. And just underneath you see the state target sixty. So we met that target. We don't, we haven't always met that target in the past. And so that's been a goal for several years. This graph will show you some. The first set of numbers is that same number that general education eighty percent or more of their school day and from the school years fifteen, sixteen through nineteen twenty. And you can see that that has improved every year. We've increased that amount of time that students with disabilities have been in the general education setting. And then that next set of numbers is the graduation rate for students with disabilities. And you can see there that that has been increasing over the last several years. And then the final columns are that dropout rate for students with disabilities. And if you look at that, you can see clearly that it has decreased, that we've had fewer dropouts of students with disabilities over the last several years. So it's nice to see that as we become more inclusive, that some of our outcomes, I demonstrated in the data, that our graduation rate and our dropout rate are improving. And then I just wanted to highlight some of our state assessment data from the school meter. And it goes through each grade level, but I just, if you look at the highlights, this is comparison to Clinton County School Districts. We were ranked number one for ELA in grade three. And this is for students scoring three or four on state assessments. And ranked number two for grade four and number three for grade seven. And then you can see that for math, grade three, we were also number one in the county. And math, grade eight, we were number two. And then science, grade four, we were ranked number three in the county. Those are just kind of some of our highlights from the special education data this past year. Do you have any questions?
One question. How does this compare to prior years based on the cohort? Is it, does it match cohort or are there trends changing cohort?
Can you repeat that?
So this is data we have for these grades, for these classes last year or what year is this?
For the state assessment data?
Yeah.
This is last school year.
Right. Is there a trend from one year to the next, as I mean, LA three to four to five, based on cohort from the previous years?
You can look at that really nicely laid out in school meter and I didn't share that with you tonight, but you can watch the cohort throughout the years and see if it's been consistent or you know what is happening with that data and cohort. But I did not highlight that.
So this is the students with disabilities data. We have the other data and we can break it down one hundred ways to Sunday in a round of the dime. So we can go through that particular question at another meeting if you'd like. But we regularly track how, you know, it's a diagonal track, you know, kids from third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh grade, and we track that. Obviously, in the first COVID year, there's no data, but we do track it. We're very aware of it. And I'll tell you that the data, you know, a lot of people, they complained that, a lot of people were very, very happy, I should start with that, that we were in school during the pandemic, right?
Yep.
Some people, right, some people thought they should be home around the bell. Of course, I'm looking at it. He's mentioned that he knows people close to him, like other students. But all kidding aside, we've leapfrogged a number of schools, which is very rare when you're in the largest institution with a higher than average socioeconomic, poor socioeconomic status ranking, right? So we have more students that have socioeconomic needs. We have more students than the general population. We have more special ed students and our outcomes are better than all, right? So that's just really impressive. And you'll see that, you can see that across all data. And you see that with our graduation rate, special ed, regular ed. We'll continue to showcase that data.
The graph data portion, I think it's the slide right before this one. Yeah, so we have nineteen twenty. Do we have twenty twenty-one as well?
So this is under, on the school report card, it's under twenty twenty-one, but it's actually nineteen twenty data, just how they report out.
Okay.
It's a year behind. So no, I don't have the, we don't have the twenty twenty-one.
Because that would actually be, okay.
Yeah, it's always tracking one year.
I'm sure. You know, it's, that nineteen twenty number is really impressive. When you look at like fifteen, sixteen, forty-seven point four percent, then we jump, you know, you know, touch south a six percent, about a three percent jump. And then we see, you know, just south of a ten percent jump. That's, that's pretty incredible. I'm curious as to what was the, what do you think the overall cause was to see that big of a jump in that year?
Well, because we've slowly been trying to become more inclusive and include, because more looking at our programs and how do we best include them. So for, you know, it was two years ago, there was some change in regulations on certification at the high school level for special education teachers. And we made the decisions department move away from fifteen-one academic classrooms and do consult with teacher model for those students. So that helped improve students being separated into a special education self-contained classroom for those periods. So that was a big contributor.
So you moved away from the fifteen-one model?
Yes.
Did, did you do that, like, did that cascade down through middle school and elementary school?
Yes, so we have, at the middle school, there used to be also some fifteen-one math and reading classes that are no longer there. We also had at one time three twelve-one-one classrooms at the middle school and we now have two.
Okay.
So as we've looked at each student and what they can do and how to get them best included in the general education study, so they're not removed from that curriculum, then we've decreased the numbers in those programs. Same for this year, so it's not reconnected, obviously, in this data, but in the future it will be. There used to be, well, three and then two twelve-one-one classrooms at Carwinhead Elementary School. And this year, those, that school is fully inclusive and there's no self-contained classrooms.
Is that saying the elementary school here?
No, so the elementary school here has, is a little bit different because they do have two eight-one-one classrooms, which were not at Carwin, you know, we only have them here. We have one less twelve-one-one classroom at EES. And then we still do have a twelve-one-three-one classroom at EES. So it is a little bit different.
Is that twelve-one-three-one, is that considered an elementary room or is that a?
Well, no, it's a, it can be a K-12 room.
It's a K-12.
So it's just kind of slowly looking at all students and seeing where we can find success out in the general education setting. We've really seen a big change in some of the students, for instance, at middle school that used to be in a twelve-one-one program that have now been pushed out and are being successful in the high school curriculum and passing region's exams. It's been very nice to see the progress.
Cool, thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for, we have this presentation and then that point two, for those components that everybody discussed so well. But I do want to thank everybody, the buildings and ground head and team, board of education, teachers and staff for making the kickoff to this year great. And it was great. I think the main reason last year is to seem really good to pay back to what we perceive as normal. So it seemed to be more exciting than, than most other years. So that was just terrific. And I'm very, very thankful for that. As I mentioned many times, I mentioned many times this year, when I speak, Crystal Palmer's in the audience, she was on this board when we talked about how are we going to change some of the things we're doing when it comes to being reactive, reacting to or having a better process, I guess I should say, to discipline disruptive students and students in crisis. And that's a priority this year. As we've talked about before, we hired more people. We put in, put in place what we know as a better process. And now we're in the implementation of that. So it wasn't just discussion, we always have discussion. And the hard part is what we need to grow for the implementation. So that's where we are. And what we're talking about is whether we want to be proactive or reactive, right? Whether we want to wait for crisis or whether we want to teach to avoid crisis. And then also very important in that is role responsibility for the, for our, for our adults. And we're just going over that and driving that home. So that is a huge priority mission. Also, I'd like to recognize that a lot of people did a lot of great work for our new staff orientation, which happened the day before our first professional development day. We did have a lot of great committee meetings, as you'll discuss in a few minutes, the board and different members of, of different teams are on some of those committees. It's great. Had really good union meetings with all different unions and those have done particularly well. Our active shooter silent is over seventy now, which is terrific for people coming on a Saturday, a staff, excuse me, to come in on a Saturday and participate in an active shooter drill. We're very fortunate and I think that was brought about our state committee meeting. Our audit is in process. We've had multiple state troopers here poking and prying at our, our security and safety measures. I'm going to get feedback from them, that's going to be useful, of course. Our, one of our board goals this year is to, or one of our board goals in the last three years, including this is the last year of that, was to enhance processes and our overall experience for extracurriculars and for athletics. And that's going particularly well. I did want to highlight that we had great additions in the, which was originally the assistant coaching component for both boys soccer and girls cross country, where we had a hall of fame coach coming in to support the boys soccer team. And one of the region's best ever cross country competitors and cross country coaches has joined our staff, former Olympic marathon trial runner Kathy Greendale, champion, is now on our staff as well. I think she's a co-coach, that's a co-coach. The current coach was just so welcome to have her, but he just, let's just co-coach. Does that understand it? In closing, a couple more, a couple other items. One was the, hopefully everybody saw, it wasn't students with disability data, but it was region's data that I sent out on the parent's page because I wanted to celebrate region's data, where we were ranked first in the whole region, which we've been ranked high many times, but never number one, probably for a number of reasons. But to be ranked first, I was just, I'm always proud of the work everybody does, without doubt, but that was always something to celebrate. And we'll try to find other items that we just did today to celebrate, you know, achievement data. Achievement data is not everything. Some of the other things we talked about are part more important, but it's part of the mosaic. It's important to understand and focus in on the number one role why we are here and that is to educate, educate students. And some of that story is told in, in that. And last week, I was excited to hear that there's a trip to Mars and I was very disappointed that I wasn't invited to the baked potato party.
Just like everybody else, we've been, we had been preparing for the beginning of the school year, even the business office prepared. All those new hires that happen have to be inputted into the system. We have salaries that are entered. We have lots and lots of paperwork. We have materials and supplies that need to be ordered for everybody. And it all requires a lot of background work that nobody sees, but it happens behind the scenes. So everybody's been very, very hard at work to start the school year. And I do believe it started pretty smoothly on transportation and buildings and grounds and cafeteria all did really well as well. We're there to support them in all of their programs. So and now we've started tax collection. Tax collection started last week. So Dan Pelkey is collecting taxes and that will continue on through October. And that's about all. Next, next month you will see Mike Flores here to present the audit. So that is also coming up. I think that's about it.
Excellent, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the previous episode? All right. Should we know is probably practice, maybe add some, some things you've got in your practice because I'm here right now. Committee reports Hall of Fame.
Saw a report on the Hall of Fame. We had skeleton crew there for the Hall of Fame and we made some final decisions to have what we hope is a wonderful ceremony to celebrate the second class above the town Hall of Fame. They went well. Appreciate the, Adam, the Facebook Adam, who have, and Mr. Lambert, who have been there and supporting this committee work. Thank you.
Okay, how about the regions committee?
We had two meetings since the last board meeting we had. I didn't make it to the last one. Dan, how far did we get with the pre-K additions or reg?
I didn't make it either.
Nicole?
I don't know. So, so the final discussion was to have, there was two, there was two options left. One is to have classrooms built above the current grade or what, or the second option. And I know we left last meeting talking about that, but it was about a million dollars less expensive to extend another wing out at EES. And we did talk about how we reached out to the state to offer, to, we reached out to the state and asked them if we could have more pre-K offerings, knowing that it usually takes quite a long time to hear back from the state on anything. Wanted to have a game for marginally, I think it was a matter of hours, where they turned to her and said, absolutely, you can have two additional classrooms. So we can't offer those right now. We don't have the space in my EES. We already had approval for more classrooms, which will take people off the waiting list. And then because of remuneration at the pre-K level, we are the, I think, the only school in the state that actually, I know we were the only school in the state, I don't know if we still are the only school in the state, that actually receives reimbursement for giving those students with disabilities services with pre-K in-house. So we will have generated revenue to help pay for those particular classrooms. I don't make, I won't stop making, let's, let's understand something here. So that addition will go on, which will not house pre-K kids. Pre-K students will be brought into other classrooms, current existing classrooms that are, that like have bathrooms in them and, and are ready for pre-K. And then like a first or second grade classroom will rotate and they'll be, so there could be anything from first grade through, probably first grade, third grade in there, you could really put any grade in there, but that's what, that's what we're thinking. So it's just a rotation of rooms. They don't give space to EES, which is, which is great and needed. That will take some time, but I think that the next meeting will have Mike here. You can just remember, he's to come to remember everything, right? So I have Mike, our architect, here talking about what the plan is and what we've got proposed. So that's, that's something, oh, and I don't know if I mentioned, it was a million, they mentioned for a million dollars less expensive to have on, on grade and just move a basketball court than having a, 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 a less disruptive to the education setting. So that kind of, buildings and grounds liked to car better and it just was, it kind of was unanimous. It was absolutely unanimous to extend it that way. I think that was about it, right? Oh, and the other news in the operations was the cap outlet got approved, so we're good to go with the cap outlet. It's going up soon and then.
The notice is going out September twenty-fourth. There were bids, will open bids on October twenty-sixth.
That will have more safety doors at EES and those closet permanent structures, not wood permanent structures, but big wood permanent structures for other restrooms at the athletic complex.
Thank you. Safety committee.
Yep. Hi. So we had our safety meeting on September first. The first thing we talked about was the Saturday twenty-fourth drill for the shooter, active shooter drill. We also talked about COVID and making rules that can be enforced versus not enforced. And we talked about how many tests we had on, on hand. We talked about if you're sick, stay home, just logical things and stuff. We also talked about if you test positive, how long you should stay home, four, five days and everything, so. We also talked about new safety measures, like door frame windows, top right have a number now for people that need to see which room they're in if there's an active shooter or something happens. Stairwells, exit entrances, we talked about. Somebody asked about the courtyard. I guess we named out the hallways, right? We talked to our SROs, our guards, met them for people that hadn't known them and stuff. We talked about new PA systems because there were spots, I guess in the school that didn't have the PA system where you could hear. So we talked about phones being used as PA systems. We talked about overdoses, lock boxes, nurses. And we talked about IDs, if anybody, does everybody wear them or, or don't they? At East Cleveland.
Thank you.
It was a big meeting. It lasted about, what, two hours?
Yeah.
Versus we had set aside an hour or so.
I did want to bring up the PA system. It's, it's all, it sounds super important, but we had, it was pretty good work. Since I've been here probably way before I arrived, PA system's always been a source of never working exceptionally well. If it always works in your room, that's great, but if it's not working all over the school, the dead spots or the standards aren't, don't work for us. So we brainstormed, I forgot who was in the, in the meeting, we brainstormed, but we came up with the idea, we just put in a new telephone system and everyone has a telephone. And we reached out to West O'Comber. West O'Comber has helped us, actually helped us last year with an issue. And they're helping us again expand the capability of our phone system. So we're, so right now, there are times when our phones are, maybe it's happening all the time, where our phones can give the morning announcements in the classroom. But we want to expand that to make sure that there's, there's audio in the hallways, the gym and a couple of devices. So our PA system may, things do move slow, not in our end, but just the way things work. But hopefully in short order, that whole system will continue to improve and it will be our PA system and the current PA system will be like our backup. That's, that's kind of what we are. And West O'Comber is a good partner, very responsible, so. And that way we won't constantly, every couple of months have to be hopefully working on our PA system.
Okay, is there any questions so far on these committee reports? Any one? All right, the last one was, the last couple of weeks, yeah, weeks ago, we started doing some negotiations with administration, staff personnel, and then, and then also added staff as well.
Competitive staff.
Competitive, competitive. Everything seems to be going pretty well. We haven't had any issues. Very amicable, very understanding. Some back and forth, right now with some information gathering. Anything else?
I'm sound well.
Yeah. If you guys have any questions, please tell us. So. All right. Public comment. Is there any here, public comment? Misses. Resolved the superintendent of schools request for education to approve the following amendments. I have a motion, please.
I'm all for you, Nicole.
Second?
Second, Brad.
And the discussion of questions. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. CSC and CPSC. Resolved the superintendent of schools request to board of education to approve the CSC, CPSC and five oh four provisions dated nine thirteen twenty-two. Motion, please.
I'm all for you, Nicole.
Oh, second?
I'll second Patty.
Okay. Any questions in discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Resolved the superintendent of schools request to board of education and the following resolutions on this consent agenda, resignations, termination appointments and retirement PAs are hereby approved. I have a motion, please. Motion, Brad. Brad. Second?
David.
David. All right. Any questions or discussions on this? Can we go? All in favor?
Aye.
Do want to take a note. Nellie, Pauline is, is here?
Yes.
All right. So you have your probationary agriculture teacher effective eighteen thirty-one, twenty-two, four-year term. Congratulations. Thank you for being here. All right. All the way to page eleven, section nine, I miss anything? Resolved the superintendent of schools request to board of education of the following resolution of this consent agenda, sponsorship agreements, proceeding technical education programs, MTSS plan, and will you support staff in OT? And will you put the county health department school chairman in stipend? Admission for sports, side letter of understanding will support staff, guards. Agreement between CFPES and DCST contract, confidential secretary to superintendent, contract business manager, school host, contract assistant superintendent of special services and side letter of understanding with PTA, being are hereby approved. Motion, please.
Motion, Brad.
Okay. Second, Nicole. Any questions or discussions on this? Please. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right. Thank you. This is what I just discussed. And this one? What, five, sorry. No, that's part of the, the separate.
Part of it.
Yeah. But it does have a separate.
It's part of it.
Yeah, I should have heard. Oh, okay. This one is good. Resolved the superintendent of schools request to board of education that the district wide school safety plan being is hereby adopted. Motion, please.
John.
John. Second? Brad? Brad. Any questions in discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right. Financial. Resolved the superintendent of schools request to board of education that the following resolutions on this consent agenda, transfers and Clinton County Health Department chairman in second, being are hereby approved. Motion, please.
I'm all for you, Nicole.
Nicole, second?
John.
John. All right, this is a roll call, please.
Adrian Dean?
Aye.
Debra Speedy?
Yes.
John Bearchild?
Yes.
Christopher Galloway?
Yes.
Patty Lullem?
Yes.
Ed Mary?
Yes.
Nicole Bucor?
Yes.
Richard here?
Yes.
Dave Trudeau?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right. So just, this, okay, now we're in this, all right. Board, all right, so we have a request, a spreadsheet so far for due to board retreat for us. And we've got the spreadsheet, there was one date that was most of the best.
Everybody was thinking seventeen.
It's a. Right. So does anybody have any questions on, on the date? Concerned, anything particular about this retreat this Saturday?
Where, where is it?
October, it's on Monday.
I think it said where is it?
It will most likely be at, we just want to make sure we're good on the seventeenth or it'll most likely be at the butcher block.
It's a Monday.
It's a Monday.
Tomorrow night, and it'll be at the Butcher Block.
There's also, did, did anybody, does anybody remember seeing an email that came out about preference for doing new board member, this is about the program stuff. All right, so, the intent for that one was that, we went to New York City school boards, the idea is that going forward for the next years, and we're gonna have that right after the elections, because typically we end up waiting forever, and we kind of get dangerous with that information of our responsibility, and you jump right into, right into the roll. So we close our document, and next year we closer to, and this is where North Country is kind of like, we're forward. So if you can respond to that, this year, we're trying to add another one here in North Country that will include our, most east district and also some of the other ones, and that way you don't have to try those far if we hold it here at the CDS facility. So, if you want to go back, take a look at your emails, respond to that, that would be great. Any other additional items, if we have any concerns, questions, to the board? Wow, so content. Public comment, anybody else? New here, public comment. And we don't have an executive session scheduled, so we'll be close to the table. All right, there's nothing else. Result of the board of education adjourned meeting at seven oh seven. Motion please.
Motion, Nicole.
Second?
Second, Padraig.
Any discussions or objections? Hall in favor? Is everybody coming? And have a good night.